Good for her.
You need to get her email?
I saw vacation.
I texted it right away.
She's on a hug.
Good. Okay. They're recording. Thank you. So good afternoon and welcome to council Monday, March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Follow me to four P M. And I'd like to welcome new news counselor, Councilor Suki and live with us. Congratulations and welcome. As always, just remind you to turn off your mobile devices or vibrate. Okay. Any additions or additions to the agenda today? No additional report, Jen. During that, I need a moment for second to accept the agenda for Monday, March twenty eighth, twenty-two is our immediate council. Senator, Senator Lake, Councilor Valance. Good. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Any disclosures of interest to me? During that, I do have a motion here that council hereby does miss the regular meeting of council. They're held on Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a surveyor meant to move by. Councilor Suki?
Councilor Valance.
Well, thank you. Any questions, errors, or omissions at those minutes? Very none. Call question on favor?
Yes.
Very. Thank you. Um. We had unfinished business. There's a motion to rescind the declaration of emergency COVID, Mr. Scorchens. Just I'll just read the motion. I guess basically it was no report. We already discussed it. The council hereby rescinds the state of emergency for the town where I thought was declared on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Move by?
Councilor Valance.
Councilor Valance, I go with Councilor Lake. Any questions? Councilor Lake?
Yeah, I'm just wondering. I know with the move by the provincial government, obviously, we're moving lots of these mandates, but I think realistically speaking, if there were to be another outbreak or another wave to this pandemic, what's the process? If we did want to kind of go back into an emergency, do we have to come back into council? I was wondering if things, I know there's COVID in town, but if it were to get worse, what's our options?
Yeah, we actually don't have to come to council to declare an emergency. In this case, we didn't initially, but through our emergency management committee, of which I chair, both the mayor and I together can make that declaration. So it can happen instantaneously, to be honest.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, hopefully, we don't have to go back into another state of emergency and hopefully that, you know, the 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 fire into the river and the this one around again, so it doesn't impact as much as with the warmer weather, warmer weather outside. As we get outside and enjoy that. All in favor?
Yep.
Very. Thank you. In council reports. Council Cabinet, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. As of the return from March break, the mask mandate has officially been lifted in Marathon High School. So masks are optional, but students and staff are still encouraged to continue wearing masks in the building. And most of the people at school have continued to do so. The first graduate meeting for potential graduates happened on Thursday, March twenty-fourth at seven P M. We discussed scholarships and burseries, gown rentals and grad photos. More graduate meetings are to follow sooner rather than later. We don't have any specific dates for those yet, but we have a potential graduation ceremony date, which is June twenty-fourth. We're hoping for the ceremony to be in person, but it will have to comply with the COVID nineteen protocols that will be in place by that time. And a prom or dance for the graduation is still kind of up in the air. We've had a lot of sport days since we came back from March break. We had one on Tuesday, March twenty-second. That was in Red Rock. We had one on Friday, March twenty-fifth at Lake Superior High School, and we had one today at Marathon High School. And this Wednesday, we'll be having another one also at Marathon High School, I believe. The winter athletic season will be wrapping up this week, and we've also been finally able to have visitors in the in the gym. And the spring season will be kicking off soon, which will have soccer and badminton. And we will be hosting the N triple S double A badminton semifinals in a couple of weeks. Student trustee elections are also coming up soon with information, information sessions planned this week and next week. The student trustee position is similar to the student counselor role. It's a seat on the board representative of students, and we are seeking interested candidates from Marathon High School for this position. We're a few weeks away from midterms. Midterm report cards will be getting sent out to students and families soon, which is also important for potential graduates looking at early acceptance from universities. Students are being encouraged to reach out to their teachers if they feel like they're struggling or falling behind, or if they're just interested in seeing how they're doing in their classes. Grade transition days are also coming up. We're hoping to welcome new grade nines into the school sometime in the next month, month and a half. So the school staff is meeting with teams from our four feeder, four feeder schools and with restrictions lifted. We hope to have our new grade, new grade eights, grade nines in the school a few times before the year ends.
Great. Any questions? That's good. Good update. Up next, we have a report on land disposition and some descriptions.
So Town Marathon bylaw number sixteen seventeen is the bylaw that regulates the sale and dispositions of municipal land. There's the duty of the clerk to report to council from time to time with respect to land, which may be considered surplus to the requirements of the municipality, expressions of interest in municipal lands, and the recommended method of disposing of lands considered for disposition. It is the responsibility of the clerk to obtain an independent appraisal prior to consideration by council to sell lease or other ex disposal lands, except in such cases where an appraisal is not required by statute and not in the opinion of a clerk necessary or advisable. Administration has been approached unsolicited by C G Developments, Inc., who have put forward an offer to purchase two legal parcels located at the fourteen Peninsula Road, the former D H Mall site. So PIN six, two, four, four, eight, two, zero, five, two, and PIN six, two, four, four, eight, zero, zero, four, zero. These properties are located at fourteen Peninsula Road. As mentioned, C G V intends to construct a fifty-three unit hotel in two phases under the Travelodge brand. Phase one of the project would include nineteen units with construction starting in April twenty-two and plan to be completed in July of this year. Phase two would include thirty-four units and be constructed in two thousand and twenty-three. A complete drawing package has been submitted to administration on March the ninth, and a draft agreement of purchase and sale has been submitted by C G V on March the second. The town's legal counsel has reviewed the proposed transaction and the associated sale documents, and notes no concerns or omissions in documentation. The method to be used to dispose of municipal lands is not limited to public auction, public tender, direct sale, land exchange, call for proposals, and listing of the property with a real estate broker. Council made by resolution or by law has established an acceptable minimum reserve bid, fix any other term or condition of the sale, direct that the sale will be subject to the requirements of an A P S, and delegate to the to the clerk the authority to settle terms and conditions of agreements of purchase and sale and to extend, to the extent not desired by council. Administration is proposing that council utilize the direct sale method at an amount of a hundred thousand dollars be the fixed purchase price for the two land parcels, and then the agreement for purchase and sale be transacted between C G V Developments and the town. A land appraisal is not being recommended at this time by administration. The October two thousand and twenty land sale for a similar, similar parcel of land in the same area to Canadian Commercial acquisitions for fifty thousand dollars serves as an appropriate baseline price. Housing and transient accommodations are identified as action areas for two thousand and twenty-two in the town's current strategic plan. A hundred thousand dollar sale fee will be recognized through this transaction, and the options for council today are A, undertake a direct land sale with C G V Developments, Inc. for the legal properties as described, with the C E O clerk authorized to transact the agreement of purchase and sale, or B, do not approve the request at this time. Your administration recommends that option A be approved and that bylaw number two thousand and twenty-one be approved, authorizing the corporation of the Town of Marathon to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale with C G V Developments for two land parcels located at fourteen Peninsula Road, and that the C E O clerk be authorized to complete the transaction on behalf of the municipality.
Thanks for that report. Do you have a motion for that council? Everybody accepts the tax report recognition of land disposition to the road. Further, that the approving bylaw be adopted later this evening, approving the land disposition. Move by?
Councilor Valance?
Councilor Valance, Councilor Lake, questions? Council Lake?
Yeah, first of all, congratulations on getting us closer to a hotel. We've identified that certainly our business communities identified that as a real need. One of the things I think about as we move forward is those parcels have traditionally been the official parking for our arena. So I'm just wondering in in looking briefly at the plan, how can we work with the developers to ensure that parking continues to be accessible for, you know, the folks in town using that arena and makes good use of that double space? And also, as we get into traffic, I mean, we're building a really nice downtown core now. It's actually really exciting to think about the things that are in that area. How do we manage traffic, which is something we haven't had to do before, in that area? So I just wonder if administration has thought about that or how we can approach that?
Yeah. So with respect to the first question, you'll see in the plans, there is a component of the parking lot that'll be maintained. I guess that would be to the, we'll say, the southwest corner, which we would maintain, so it would be on the Sun Crescent side, which we would maintain as being that overflow area. Although nobody does utilize that parking lot, really, on on average, we would maintain that piece and have that severed from the other two parcels so that it remains in our possession. We would still maintain access to well number six, of course, located in the corner. And we would obviously, you know, have those discussions with, you know, those owners of the facilities. You know, it's likely that we'll see parking take place here because people utilizing them, you know, whether it be a hotel or the Tim Hortons facility are going to utilize the complex as well, no different than the similar region we have with our Canadian Tire owner, where, you know, it's always been advantageous to have those people, you know, utilizing the arena parking in the Canadian Tire parking lot and driving traffic through those facilities. So I I don't, I don't think it ultimately affects our situation. You know, it's a, we have, we do have a landlocked building there.
Yeah.
But, you know, I would see a similar scenario that we have with the Canadian, the Canadian Tire owner. I will respect to that. And if you could repeat the second question.
I think you got it both. I think you got it both.
Oh, the traffic.
Managing.
So what we will do is is traffic, believe it or not, it's a, we, it takes, we have to complete a three-year study following M T O guidelines if we want to install traffic lights at any intersection.
Okay.
So this will undoubtedly increase traffic. But I think, you know, no different than we did with the Tim Hortons development, we utilized our site line control by law to ensure that, you know, there were proper setbacks, that there were increased visibility from a construction perspective. So we'll use site line control to to monitor that from a construction perspective. But we have looked at internally and we'll probably start the process, you know, if generation P G M does go ahead with my construction, about looking likely at the the corners of Hemlo and Peninsula, looking at Stevens and Peninsula, looking at Sunday Peninsula and doing those studies required to ultimately get the approval from M T O for street lights.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Valance?
Would there be any potential or legal, when you look at it, for a crosswalk between the arena and into the Canadian Tire parking lot? Now, we see a lot of traffic going back and forth with just the arena alone. What would be the, I guess, the process to just put a crosswalk in there so that would there be any?
Legally can't put a crosswalk in because it would be trying to connect municipal property, which is public property and private property.
Okay.
Which is the Canadian Tire parking lot. So you're technically crossing there on your own regard. And it could be honestly considered J walk because it's, it's not our, you know, there, we have parking in the front of our facility, albeit not enough. But that is the parking area, right? So if you're crossing from that public space to a private space, then you're doing that on your own regard. We have looked at the crosswalk. That's why we know we legally can't do it. So, you know, some of the things that we have looked at in that area, and certainly the mayor would have been on council, was looking at enhanced lighting, you know, making sure that, you know, that we take the snowbanks down, you know, all those, you know, simple things that are just responsible to do. But from the, you know, in terms of the actual legal question, no, we can't do it.
Correct.
Been done that a few times in the past.
Yeah. It's been a few.
Anybody else?
Two parts. The first part is, are we going to do anything to ensure the security around our purpose so that we don't have wash area? Because I remember at one point in time, we were concerned about salt wash and stuff like that from piling up snow in that area. So I'll let you after that first question.
Yeah. So I think that's a simple one. You know, obviously, the design of the facility is meant that so it meets our official plan and zoning by law. And and that's a consideration we utilize through site line control, you know, stormwater management, snow clearing and the melting of snow. That's all contained within the site line control. So we'll ensure that that's regulated properly through that process.
And I don't, and the second part, sorry, and the same part of it, at one of the A M O or the Good Roads, actually, was they have a little, I guess, in the municipal world, what they call like a Tim Hortons consideration because of traffic flow that revolves around Tim Hortons. And there's some examples. Canora is an example where it didn't work, or they didn't plan for it. With this situation, I can't remember from the plans. Are we gonna, are they, the hotel going to be able to access off Peninsula Road and Sun Crescent? So there's a loop process for traffic flow? Because I know the corridor is narrow there. So that's one consideration that that we may want to design or through site control. Because if it's all coming off Peninsula or it's all coming off of Sun Crescent, plus with the congestion of Tim Hortons, that's something that we need to consider as site control. And and if that's a consideration, do we need to annex some corner spaces either on the bell side, bell building side, or the, what is existing Tim Horton side to make sure we have two lanes in that area so people can make the turn either right or left, especially coming off Sun onto Peninsula Road? If you're making a left-hand turn there, you may be there for a while and hold traffic backed up.
Yeah. So yeah, excellent question. Again, that's an item that's dealt with through site line control. So site line control would be attached to the agreement of purchase and sale. We dictate the terms. So traffic flow would be dealt with. And the other thing that we'll utilize to help deal with traffic flows curving and put that through site line control, so it'll direct which areas traffic has to flow from either an egress or an ingress off of Sun or off of Peninsula.
Okay.
I'm assuming too, the site plan control, that also talks about lighting and stuff too? With the housing in the residential area right there?
So you'll see in your, so you'll see in councils' design, you know, that that's why the one-story and the two-story are set up that way. So the one-story meets our zoning requirements from a rest, you know, backing onto a residential perspective and does take into account those things like lighting and noise and those different scenarios that will be dealt with through site line control.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Yeah, the the other thing that I just started to think about now is, again, when you start thinking about what that core is going to look like, and it's pretty exciting to have what we have there now. We've got Veterans Square. What doesn't really exist in that area is a place for pedestrians or, you know, if you're in the hotel and you're you're coming out, it's a nice day in Marathon. Where do you go sit and have lunch? I just wonder about, you know, working with our business partners in some of that that green space that's there to have, you know, a a place where people can can kind of sit and be outside. It's a, it's turning into a kind of a village square in lots of ways. So how can we, you know, promote that idea of places to sit, places to walk, and make it feel like a a real kind of that European city center square? I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, what we're trying to do, you know, and this was, you know, the thought process when we, you know, we, you know, council approved the teardown of fourteen Peninsula. Initially was to centralize, you know, our our business traffic in that area. So, you know, I think it makes sense that through our E D O, we have those discussions. Our businesses and the Chamber of Commerce, we can certainly look to utilize Veterans Square. I think you'll, you know, anybody who sees in the summertime, it's a popular area. And then the other thing, you know, we we do need to start thinking about, and we'll have a report coming to council before the the end of your term, you know, that we talked about in our strategic planning last fall is the new active living center and what does that concept looks like? So, you know, if we envision that, we have to build a new facility, which there's no question we will. You know, what does, you know, the old facility look like and what do we do with it? And maybe, you know, we talk about, you know, that that centralization or that, you know, the, you know, the square idea, and, you know, maybe that is where a part goes. But, you know, thanks, you know, none of these things we're doing as one-offs. They're all coming to council as part of, you know, longer-term visions for the municipality.
Council Suki?
Obviously, I'm new to the scene here. I'm not familiar with some of the groundwork that was brought up to bring in a hotel to Marathon. Obviously, that's exciting. But I'm sure like a conversation has been had at some point on how that affects some of the other hotels in the area, with one of them being locally owned and some of the other ones perhaps being a little bit outdated, but has that conversation sort of been had on how that impacts those existing local businesses?
So it's not a conversation administration would have. We have to be very careful. It's called, under the municipal act, it's called the section one oh six, bonusing clause. Right? Where really, it's council's responsibility to ensure that there's fair competition amongst the sector. We don't have the ability to say we have too many hotels or we have too many restaurants. You know, council can either approve the land sale or not, but council can't set terms and conditions like we should only have two hotels in Marathon. You get yourselves into a very gray area when you start to make those decisions. You know, where where council does have the ability to, you know, make the decisions with respect to those types of items is whether you approve land sales, leases, site line control, all those types of items.
Okay.
Good. Had a couple of questions or concerns in regards to location and build. You know, we all know what the site looks like now that the portion of the first lot of Tim Horton was developed. The secondary lot, which is our phase two, which was looking at twenty-three, that's the more, you know, dirtier area because it's been gravelled and dug up. And that that doesn't project to get done till twenty-three, whereas phase one is going to be developed in twenty-two, and it's already cleaned back there. So that's a paved parking lot. That's question one. I mean, that that's, we can't control that. That's just something to talk to the actual developer. But w- within regards to the square footage of our facility, our rectus, we have a certain amount of allotted parking spaces, no different than this site line control. They built somebody square feet. They must have so many parking spots. Is this going to leave us enough actual parking behind this facility or arena, even though nobody uses that parking lot? Because we have to make sure we follow the the site line control for the availability of parking for the facility that we we operate.
Yeah. So we, our C B O has looked at this design and this layout, and it it does fit within our requirement.
Okay. So it will leave us enough space back there for the availability of parking for our facility, even though nobody uses, utilizes them. So so if if this is approved tonight, maybe that opportunities to have a chat with the developer and see if there's a comprehensive switch to just for aesthetics, that's not, you know, it'll all happen over the next couple of years, but it's just, you know, making the community in that area a little bit cleaner and tidier right off the bat.
Or or your worship even, you know, if, you know, if site two, you know, didn't proceed as scheduled, you know, when they do a site one, a site prep, we can request they do site two, site prep, even though we're not building on it.
Right.
But it would clean it up from
Right.
from that perspective.
Yeah. It's an awful lot of parking availability. So there's a lot of parking spaces. And and I know the easement, we do have an agreement already with the Canadian Commercial that you need, that easement that will be shared between developer and Canadian Commercial.
Yes, we will still. So, yeah, so so we, so we've all, we've already run the water and sewer in anticipation of this type of development. We need access to that water and sewer, even though it extends onto private property, does come off of our main. So we we will still have, the easement will be still registered in our name. It'll now just be registered with, we'll have to re-register it on title with.
And you told the.
That's correct.
For both parties registered.
That's correct.
Anything else? Council Valance?
Just a rough estimate, because this will provide a lot of positive, and a positive I just thought of right now is that math tax. So is there any estimate roughly of what this would generate for the math tax in the fiscal?
It's a good question. Quick math. So we, I'll just round it to fifty units, and if we assume eighty percent occupancy, right now, we're at a hundred and twenty-five. So it's probably going to add anywhere from forty to fifty thousand additional.
Okay. All good.
Maybe a line.
Call question on the favor?
Yeah.
Maybe a line caterer.
Yeah, maybe. All in favor?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you for that report. Look forward to the spring developments.
Yes.
It's coming quickly. Up next, we have a report on the new works operation facility. Mrs. Scorchenski?
So the Town of Marathon's Works and Operations Facility located on Penlake Road was identified initially in the two thousand and sixteen to eighteen corporate strategic plan as needing capital replacement. The useful current facility was constructed in stages in nineteen seventy, including four separate structures, and has passed its useful life cycle. The facility has space limitations, safety concerns, and mechanical, practical inefficiencies. A new facility would be more economical to operate, improve overall productivity, and require less maintenance and repairs. With the current status of rising inflation and interest rates, as well as the uncertain global geopolitical environment, pursuing this needed project in two thousand and twenty-two is strategic. In addition, construction costs are not anticipated to decrease in the near term. The above listed factors in combination will only serve to drive up the overall project cost in future years. An internal building committee was utilized to complete a needs and service delivery analysis previously to determine the optimal size, efficiency, and layout of the new structure. One hundred thousand dollars was included to date in the twenty-two budget, which was a carryforward from two thousand and twenty, to complete final design and costing for the new facility. Administration has completed this work, has now bring forward the new facility to council with its recommendations to proceed. The proposed public works facility will consist of sixteen thousand square feet steel constructed building. Will be built up the existing public work, rough works yard site. The new building encompasses all public works departments to be incorporated in one facility, which includes the maintenance shop, mechanic shop, and waterworks. The new design includes staff lockers and wash and showers, general neutral change rooms and washrooms, fuel storage, lube and service bay, and a voice to support both public works, recreation, and fire department fleet of equipment, an automatic washdown bay to clean vehicles and equipment, prolonging the life of the equipment. Two upper level mezzanines are also included in design for inventory and seasonal storage. I'm not going to go through the the breakdown of the actual cost, but you'll see it's it's listed. Certainly, Mr. Paris would be happy to answer any questions you have around the requirements within the facility. But really, the building cost is five point six million with additional requirements in the building to bring it to a space that we feel meets the town's Marathon needs, brings us to seven point four million with taxation, a total construction cost of seven point seven million. Currently, the only long-term bet the town has is the two thousand, two million dollar adventure entered into with Infrastructure Ontario in two thousand and fifteen to pay for the new landfill. The terms are in interest, the terms for this project are in interest, or pardon, the terms for that project are an interest rate of two point eight one percent for fifteen years. The current outstanding balance is one point two million. The two thousand and twenty-two annual repayment limit issued by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing states that the Town of Marathon is limited to paying one point nine million dollars per year on debt. Administration has contacted I O and T D Canada Trust to obtain current lending rates. Banks rarely can compete with the province in offering, offering competitive rates. And some communities choose to support their local banks if they are willing to match the rate or encourage them to keep the branch open. Obviously, T D Canada chose to close theirs in Marathon. A plan on how to finance the construction phase will depend on the construction timetable, the contractors' funding requirements, and the availability of reserves. You'll see that our treasurer has listed those scenarios in terms of financing for the seven point seven million, should council approve it from both an infrastructure Ontario perspective, as well as a traditional commercial bank over twenty, twenty-five, and thirty-year amortization rates. So the options being presented to council today are proceed with the final engineering and design financing tendering construction of the new works and operations facility in two thousand and twenty-two. Construction would start this fall, or do not proceed at this time. Your administration recommends that option A be selected, and that council provide direction on credit facility utilization, financing terms, and any use of reserves for the project, and that administration be authorized to issue the project construction tender.
Thank you for that report. I do have a motion in the council hereby accept the tax report recommendation on new works and operations facility approved. Administration be authorized to proceed with final engineering and design tendering instruction of the new works and operations facility in two thousand and twenty-two, with the finance being approved as follows. Move by? Council Lake, second by Council DeBouchette, questions? Council Lake?
Yeah, sort of a, I mean, I don't know anything about public works, and I'm not going to pretend to know what should go in that garage. That's, that's administration's job, and I trust you. The one thing I do wonder about, though, is, you know, it's funny, the discussions we're having around this table are very different than eight years ago. It's discussions around growth. If, you know, the new mine were to go and we saw a population increase, especially if we were adding, you know, potentially more housing developments, is this garage kind of? Would it accommodate that bit of growth, or are we, are we building for what we have today?
No, great question. And in reviewing this, and so I can, you know, come on board with the town. You know, I reviewed the existing site, which is, you know, twelve thousand, three hundred square feet. This building will now be sixteen thousand, three hundred eighty-nine, so allowing that provision for a bit of growth. And we definitely feel that the building is designed for the future.
Okay. Thank you.
So, go ahead. Just in regards to that, when you made that comment, so you're recommending is taking down the existing building and the carpenter shop, but leaving the cold storage facility or taking all those facilities down?
Oh, that's another great question. So in the existing work that was done ahead of time, there was no discussion of keeping existing cold storage. So that is the green building on the public works site. It's a forty by sixty, I believe it is. That's a nineteen eighty vintage. That we're actually going to, we're going to salvage. We're going to repurpose that to the waste transfer station. So if you go to the waste transfer station right now, we've got that tarp in, unit in there, which is, you know, it's failing. We're going to, you know, replace that coming up very shortly. We're going to salvage this, relocate it up to that location, and then we'll get rid of the existing trades or maintenance garage. The waterworks one, that'll give us in the sand salt shed, and that's what we'll be looking at the proposal to build.
DeBouchette?
Uh, yeah, we had discussed about the logistics or the the traffic flow in that corner, and I see you have to redesign.
And I see you have to redesign. I'm not sure if everyone caught that as part of their issues. Um, when you were talking about facing it as it's facing now, um, it will be kind of along that curve. Right? So on your two two exits, your new to end entrance exits, that face, I guess, would be the waste transfer station. Uh, is that turn radius enough for the two coverlongs plus your graders? Because it looked a little tight. That one looked good. I'm sorry, the one that's facing, I guess, the SPG is is awful tight. Is that going to be sufficient? Or you're going to need to widen that access road?
No, we won't have to actually to widen that at all. We've done the calculations. I think it was thirteen meters. We were looking for turning radius. Especially given what the, you know, waste transfer and landfill tractor trailer, which, you know, with a fifty-four foot trailer in the end. So no, those requirements have already been laid out to to meet all of them.
Okay, um, sorry, a follow-up to this. Uh, does this also provide warm storage for all for most of your fleet? Because one of the big problems, I mean, in my past career, was the cold mornings starting your equipment, so you were wasting an hour at least. Um, if you got them started, um, so in in this scenario, is it perceivable to to store your used equipment or your needed equipment that, say, per shift in the morning, you need to be have it started and ready to go?
Yeah, that's one of the key components why we want to move ahead with this new build. The intent of this is we have the entire fleet in there ready to start our morning shift, uh, to start off in in a warm, normal climate. Uh, and not be sitting outside idling for thirty to forty minutes while the hydraulics burns down on the equipment. Getting our our staff in the streets, doing the work, right at seven o'clock in the morning.
So so counsel.
Uh, yeah, just a, and again, I I I don't pretend to know a ton of a building, but I know that we've committed as council to always, you know, saying, what are we doing in terms of the environment? So I'm just wondering in terms of, uh, sometimes the cost of, uh, you know, making a building greener. Uh, it makes you not be able to do things, but are we doing anything to try to save on energy, to be efficient? Are we self-facing? Any of that passive stuff?
Yeah, so we start looking at, you know, getting into the nuts and bolts once you've approved this, get into the final design stages. You know, heat reclaim will be one of the options, right? Especially in a big garage like that. You know, we have exhaust coming now, especially when we put it if it's running, heat reclaim will be one option. We're looking at LED lighting. Um, building automation systems so we can manage the controls of the facility on unoccupied times and occupied times.
So counsel to Bushy, uh, he made a point about the, even now, I know I looked at this on the agenda on the iPad, but on this one, you're coming in to come off Penlake Road as well, coming into the yard now.
Yeah, we have two options now.
Yeah, so the this one on the paper we see here is the uh, the only one, it's just now you're going to trade off.
Yeah, there was a new one submitted on through the email.
Yeah, my apologies for not getting your package.
No, no, that's fine. It was, it was just on the, yeah, there, but so the new new entries will come off Penlake Road, because all our equipment mostly comes down Penlake Road at coffee time, lunchtime, goes into the yard, right? So you can come in and drive in and then exit back out off of Penlake Road at the far.
That's right.
Okay. Um, and then you said a valid point in in the industry, when you have equipment that sits aside when a warm atmosphere that's coming off of the road and it's not properly cleaned, I know we we oil our equipment now, but we never did before. But warm rooms and salt and water tend to rot equipment quicker. So what's the answer for that?
Yeah, so the answer for that is if you look in the drawing, we have one extended bay. That extended bay goes up seventy-five feet.
Far in there yet?
It allows for two things, would be installing a, um, I would say like a jet system, um, for when the equipment comes in. We're looking at about a six-minute cycle of coming in at the end of the shift. So at the end of the shift, we come in, we spray on the equipment, get rid of the sand, salt, make sure that's on any contamination. And then we're circling right into the garage for parking for the evening.
Yeah, good, because that that really takes a toll on any equipment when you sit into a warm room with salt and sand on it.
Yeah, we had, um, sorry, but I was, I had permission to talk with, um, Mr. Paris about that exact thing. So we had discussed a water reclaim system.
Absolutely. Talk about the environment, there's one of the systems we've been looking at.
So I just wanted.
Reclaiming that water, uh, you know, and taking purities out of it, you know, the solids, whatever we have to remove, and then reclaim that water to reuse.
Okay, so on on that issue there about that flow through, um, and the car wash, I guess, would be best way to put it. Um, is there a way to utilize that also through our, I guess, energy recirculation or heat pumps or whatever may be to heat or to provide the, I mean, it doesn't have to be hot water, but I mean, it 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 works better if it's at at least, you know, room temperature, whatever, water.
Yeah, and when we look at when we reclaim that water and the upper mezzanine, our design is actually having some storage capacity there. So then that would state, you know, basically be at room temperature. So that initial water that we're reusing, we're not reheating that to a high level. So that would be the intent of the design.
Yeah, and just to follow, because because of my past thing with logistics, uh, we, I know how much the salt takes its toll on our equipment, so we we can also then expect somewhat of a more enhanced life or life expectancy from our equipment moving forward also then, right?
Absolutely, and that'll lead us into the next, uh, going right forward, but exactly, and, you know, as I've only been here two months and, you know, this had some discussion with Gerald. And and our equipment life cycle is definitely premature. We need to extend that. And this bay, uh, this extended bay that we're looking at putting in with the wash down system, will definitely, you know, improve that. And also work for a fire department, so now, you know, the large trucks coming in after fire on the, a road call on the highway. You know, they're they're getting limited to their space. Uh, they can actually drive through there, clean the fire department equipment and park it in their base.
Uh, yeah, I I think there's no doubt that obviously we need this facility. It's it's going to be good for the town. Um, the the trick, of course, is on the finance side. It would be nice if the government had given us seven million dollars and we could just build it. I know that's not the case, so I guess a two-part question. One is, uh, on the options that were given, I feel no loyalty to a bank that left town. Uh, so I'm happy to support going to Infrastructure Ontario, which looks like better rates. Um, and two, are there any funding avenues, um, that we can be looking at to help, uh, you know, save some taxpayer money on this bill?
Uh, so to to question number one, yeah, it's, you know, it's quite clear that the the better rates through the venture are going to be from Infrastructure Ontario. Uh, both from a a longer term amortization and semi-annual interest repayment rate. Um, so that's what administration would recommend. Unfortunately, for a facility like this one, there aren't a lot of options for funding to reduce the cost. Um, there are a couple that we're going to look into, if if council does approve this project tonight. Um, I wouldn't want us to hinge it on it, but there may be opportunities to save, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and I'm specifically thinking of the Green Municipal Fund. Um, you know, we might be able to get components like heat reclamation, uh, water recycling funded under under those areas to reduce the overall borrow cost. Um, but this is really, you know, unfortunately, I guess fortunately or unfortunately, our cost to bear. Um, you know, it's it's been a long time in the works. We likely shouldn't have replaced this facility, you know, a decade ago. Um, when there were more favorable interest rates, um, like many of our facilities, we just keep patching them and and hope they're going to prolong themselves and you know, they come to the critical point where where that can happen. Um, you know, but I guess, you know, one of the the positive things is is, you know, I I crunched some numbers today and and I, you know, based on our current debt of, you know, which is about eighty-two thousand dollars a year, repaying on our outstanding debenture. Uh, this new project, which is going to be about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. Uh, you know, puts us probably, you know, near four hundred thousand dollars in annual debt repayment. Um, which we can certainly afford based on our current operating budget. And if we envision things like, you know, we're starting to see land saving, a new hotel council just approved, that's being taxation. Uh, no question, probably going to be in the neighborhood of fifty to seventy thousand dollars on an annualized basis. You know, we're we're going to increase our municipal coffers. You know, we're we're in discussions, uh, you know, with companies about leasing facilities and properties we own. Um, you know, the, you know, the Stevens Avenue site is an example, you know, with Ballard. Uh, the Mill Garage is an example. We just had a, you know, a recent inquiry about the Mill Garage for another company um, here in town. So, you know, I think from a a payment schedule, you know, administration's very comfortable telling council, we can afford this project at this time.
Okay, that's great.
So so I I have no problem. I think you're right. The subscription to this has been something that we've tossed around for many years and we probably should have bit the bullet a while back, and I'm always guys looking at saving money. So I would I would appreciate if administration would bring back a a debt repayment scenario. And I and I think counsel, you know, appropriately commenting about TD Bank, I think we should look at least cautious, see what maybe maybe they can do. Maybe they can't do anything commercially, but but also looking at a debt slash reserve usage. Because we do have a capital reserve. I know that there's a request coming forward after this presentation, but the reality is, that's what it's for. And we're not getting nothing in interest, uh, bearing monies in those accounts. And we're going to pay three point three nine at the best case scenario at three million dollars of life for the project. So we can reduce that even by a million, you know, and a half million, whatever, three quarters, two million, whatever the amount is in that reserve account that we can utilize to offset some of the expenses. And by looks of the construction and timing of this, this could be broken down over probably a two-year budget system. Correct?
Yeah, we're going to, we're looking at construction. If we get approval today, we would look at going into construction in July.
Okay.
Uh, and a completion, I would say, August, September of twenty-three.
Right, so you could utilize two budget years, and maybe there's some opportunity to surplus, you apply to this, whatever. I'm asking administration to be creative, but not but also, uh, looking at lowering that borrowing cost.
Yep.
So your worship, if if I could, if what I have a request of council is is really a two-part, uh, question is, uh, you know, one, if if council approves the facility tonight, and then part two of that would be to send us back to bring back, I I would say a month.
Okay.
Um, the detailed financial report, which at that time we can choose of how we're actually going to finance it. That'll also give us some time to engage with the Federation municipalities, look at funding options. Uh, but we would like to give the go-ahead to get to final design and engineering so we can tender the project as quickly as we possibly can.
That's about your question.
No, okay, thanks.
Okay, I I think that's appropriate. Counsel's agreeable upon that, that we won't put down and authorize borrowing system today. We'll just leave that blank, but we'll have a report come back in a month or so in regards to whatever that might look like, whether it's a partial reserve, uh, account, uh, utilized in in loan and, uh, and different opportunities with a Scottish commercial or not, if there is availability, because they are in our community and they do pay.
Yeah, we'll we'll reach out to even non-traditional that we haven't reached out to in in Thunder Bay. You know, we, you know, we were, you know, a long time TV because they were located in Marathon, but they're not now, and so there's BMO, there's credit unions, you know, the next month we'll we'll dig in and and we'll bring back a detailed report to council in the April timeframe with those financing options and funding options.
Because we're breaking this down into two now, and these are our our class A all-guess estimates on the total total cost. When we get to tender, it may be different. So at that point in time, um, even though we're approving the tendering process, um, how comfortable are are we that these numbers are at least relevant? Because things are changing, costs are going up, and, uh, is it a wish that seven point, and this is really bad, but is it a wish that seven point seven million dollars is a good deal?
Yeah, right now it is.
Yeah.
Kelly, when you look at her, uh, counselor, uh, Tabushi, um, when you look at things right now, we looked at other cost analysis. We worked with a cost consultant, looking at a very similar project to what we're looking at. Those costs just gave in a a specific value, so we're taking that into account, especially basing, we have to be mindful, Northern Ontario pays a bit of a premium price. So we've added that allocation to ensure there.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've always experienced that in the past, and administration's done well, where they they brought in a lot of times surpluses over on overall budget amount that we approved, so you know, I look at the three hundred fifty thousand dollar car wash and I'd be asking, you can save a hundred grand, that's a hundred grand. But that's something we work on as you get closer into the A model of your design and the specs. So we'll look forward to that report in a month or so in regards to the financial means, but we're good with approving the project, uh, as it is, and we'll get those final detailed specs, uh, in engineering, uh. With that being said, all in favor?
Yes.
Karen, thank you very much. Thanks for that.
You you spent seven point seven million dollars.
Put it all on you.
It's all on you, yeah.
Okay, up next we have the report on the, uh, equipment, uh, attachments for snow cleaning and snow removal. Let's do it, Paris.
Uh, thanks for worship and counsel. So if I may have file number three sixty, which is a report on the option of snow clearing equipment. Bit of the background on this is, uh, one, actually, one clarification I'd actually like to point out. In the discussion paragraph, the second paragraph, it should read two graders, not three, just so we don't have any confusion as we move forward, so. Uh, and a bit of the background, the, uh, the Town of Marathon currently has two graders in our fleet, uh, which perform most of the snow little duty or most of the snow rule during the winter months. Uh, we currently have a two thousand sixteen John Deere and a two thousand Champion. The two thousand Champion grader was due for replacement in two thousand twenty. Uh, the grader's twenty, twenty-one years old. Uh, we received initial quotes to replace the two thousand grader, uh, which is pegged at approximately five hundred thousand. Uh, prior to including the new grader in the budget, administration reviewed snow clearing equipment operations while also considering improving efficiencies in the department. Administration researched the option of purchasing a speed plow with a sander and snow blower attachment instead of a new grader. The intent is to have two graders in the fleet for the next few years. Uh, with preventative maintenance, minor repairs, and reducing hours of operation of the we are confident that we can increase the service life of the two thousand grader for another couple, four years. Uh, we would also use the two thousand champion if other equipment had mechanical issues or if it's severe weather requires more resources. Use of the speed plow versus a grader allowed one driver to perform functions of snow clearing and sanding at the same time, eliminating the need of two operators. With the blower attachment on the on the speed plow, sorry, that should have been on the blower attachment, but on, should send reads as a speed plow, we should say on the motor or a backhoe, we can reduce the time that they bring the airport blower down. So currently at the airport, we have a nineteen ninety-seven RPM snow blower. Uh, and when removing windrows and pulling like snow piles, we bring that equipment down. Uh, and again, by purchasing a new snow blower, that will ensure that the airport blower has a longer service life. Finding the standard edition on the speed plow, this would free up a dump truck also to be used for the municipality for hauling granite or snow and water. Uh, we only have one sander in the fleet right now. This will give us a spare provision of a sander. Administration also looked at the use of snow gates, and it was noted that the town did purchase a snow gate in two thousand sixteen when purchasing two thousand sixteen John Deere grader. It proved to be unsuccessful unsuccessful in the operations for a number of reasons. It decreased decreased the driver's speed taking longer to clear streets. A larger accumulation of snow could not get pushed far up, so berms leading to narrower streets. And closed proximity driveways entrance slowed down the driver. The snow gate was returned back to supplier in two thousand twenty. So the financial application is noted above. As in the above, administration has received an initial quote of five hundred thousand for replacement grader. A speed plow, snow blower attachment is also being quoted for five hundred thousand. And it would should be noted that these are initial quotes by administration, and we would obtain additional quotations include competitive bid. Administration is recommending the replacement of equipment to be funded out of the capital equipment reserves. So there would be no increase to the tax levy. The current reserves is at one point two million. Options, A, approve the purchase of the speed plow with the sander and snow blower attachments. And with the funding coming from capital equipment reserves, total cost of four hundred ninety-three million, three hundred ninety-nine, plus HST. Oh, sorry. Okay, thanks for correction. Uh, B, approve the purchase of the grader for the funding coming in from the capital equipment reserves, total cost of four hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars plus HST. Option C, keep status quo, do not approve the purchase of a speed plow or grader. Recommendations, your administration recommends option A, be selected and approve the purchase of a speed plow with sander and snow blower attachments with the funding coming from capital reserves, total cost of four hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars plus HST. With administration obtaining additional quotations prior to the final purchase. Any questions?
Great, thanks. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts attached additional option for snow cleaning equipment. And that the administration be authorized to proceed with the purchase of a speed plow with blower and sander attachments. Through that, funding for the purchase will come out of the capital equipment reserves, total cost of four hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars plus HST. Administration obtaining additional quotations prior to the final purchase. Move by. Counselor Bush, you say that counsel, like questions? Counselor Bush.
Again, um, when we have this, uh, sand attacher, is it a permanent mount or is it a mount that is I guess, piggybacked on, uh, to this unit? Because what we have then is a truck chassis utilized only for sanding. Is is it, uh, universal on that portion?
Absolutely, this unit would be universal.
Okay, and, uh, with that noted, the snow blower attachment, then I remember through our discussions, we would equip our other piece of equipment so it would be universal or being able to use on our other inventory or stock.
Yeah, we've got these prices coming in. We were looking at two sets of attached quick couplers. So we would be, um, fitting out two pieces of equipment in the fleet so that that snow work can be used in two different pieces.
And and just to follow up here, you might want to explain why it's not feasible for us to bring down the airport um, blower on a regular basis, other than the time and the and the, I guess, the float and whatever to get it down. Uh, one of the discussions was, uh, I guess, relevant on the cleanliness or whatever.
Absolutely. So when we look at any type of equipment we take from the airport, we bring that into the town operations. Uh, due to the restrictions of the airport rules for sand management, there cannot be any or salt, there cannot be any salt. Uh, and when when we take that equipment from Marathon and relocate it. when we take that equipment from Marathon and relocate it back to the airport. So the amount of time we spend cleaning that equipment, the risk we take of having that salt on that runway, and basically it's because of the aluminum on the planes, so separating that would be, this is something we're looking at also.
And, and will that extend, then, that you're saying it'll extend the life of that piece of equipment at the airport?
That's correct. And the other two questions I'll answer on that, and two responses. One is, when we take that equipment down right now, we, you know, we really increase mobilized, demobilized time and cost and risk of salt. But we also are, you know, reducing the hours of its remaining life because it is nineteen ninety-seven. We have no provision now. We take that in town, we're cleaning the windrows, we have one, you know, we hit something or something malfunctioned. Now we no longer have a snow blower at the airport, which really limits us at that point, especially we're looking at emergency services coming in for after-hours returning operations.
Okay, thank you guys. Absolutely.
Yeah, for me, that's one of the big sales is, is, you know, we live in a remote area and having access to that airport during the winter when an emergency happens is crucial. We've heard from the docks in town. It's really nice to have you on board, but that's eight point seven million dollars you should pass for this meeting. Just like to, just like to point that out. So I have like an old snow blower at my house. That's what I use, and it's cranky and I gotta, I gotta fix it. But I limp it along year after year after year, and I know at some point you have to bite the bullet and say, okay, I'm buying a new one. And so what I don't know is, like, I feel comfortable saying I can get another year out of my snow blower at home. That's your job is to tell us, no, I can't get another year out of this, it's gotta be now. So it, it's two pieces of equipment, they're both expensive. Are we at that point where it's gotta get done? Or is one gotta get done before the other one? So I'm just wondering from, just as you look at the, the equipment, you know, that's always a question on this side of the desk.
Great question, and both of them have already exceeded their limits by, like, quite a bit, especially the nineteen ninety-seven snow blower.
Okay.
You know, we've got a great mechanic crew that maintains stuff, but we're also getting at that risk level. And I think the risk we need to make sure of, because now we don't have any provision. Something happens to it, we have nothing in place right now. And when we look at the market right now, the delivery dates on equipment, it's just getting longer and longer, right? So you just don't phone up suppliers, say, you know, I need a snow blower tomorrow, it's just not gonna happen.
And just a note for council, so I did print off our reserve schedule today, because just, this will be good information for Councilor Suki. You know, so council recalls, you know, traditionally, prior to two thousand fourteen, when I took on this role, you know, we used to replace things either as needed or in large groups, like, let's buy all new trucks in one year, which doesn't make any sense. So in two thousand fourteen, we implemented a new strategy where we treated everything like rolling stock. Right? So, you know, we, we took its value, we looked at its life expectancy, we built it into a capital schedule. We started building a capital reserve fund to replace equipment year over year, so it wasn't in one lump sum payment. So the grader is scheduled in that strategy to be replaced this year. Next year, we know it's the garbage truck. We can probably get a few more years out of the garbage truck, but we're probably looking at another four hundred thousand dollars. So by, you know, looking at things, proposing things, you know, this way, it keeps us in line with our approved strategies. And, you know, we will be depleting the capital reserve fund, but we're gonna build it back up, right? That's what, you know, that's what the plan is, and that's what we do year over year. So this is the appropriate way to fund these pieces of equipment. And, you know, yes, we can switch one out, we could say it's the garbage truck this year or the grader next year, but we can't get away from, we do have to replace it.
Yeah.
Counsel Tabushi.
On that note about capital equipment or, or reserves, one of the things we always do is, we've been lucky enough that we, we ask administration to propose a budget. They watch the dollars and cents, and we come through with surpluses, but surpluses aren't guaranteed. And one of the things we've always done is utilize our surpluses to build up our capital. And one of the things I think, and they won't be this council, but I think the future councils need to do, is actually have a line item in the budget for reserves. Because we have been lucky enough to put a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in reserves, but it's not, not a guarantee. And, and from that point too, I'd be more comfortable saying we're gonna put two hundred thousand dollars in reserves and not come up with a surplus. Because that way, at least it's, it's, it's something that we know we're building, so it isn't gonna impact the taxpayer in one year when we used to do things like buy the two graders or whatever it may be. So I know it won't be in this year's budget as part of it, but I do plan on bringing that up through discussion that as part of our original budget, even though it was proposed, that we do look at putting aside a line item in the budget, that we will add something to reserves and not just rely on surpluses to rebuild our reserves. One of the things we, we did is, when we did our water and sewer rate pricings, we've been able to establish a good reserve. So when these capital projects come open, and the same thing that council like said, and even the mayor reiterated, we're not having to borrow the whole sum. So this is another thing I think we should look at, because in the next two years, if we go along with our plan about rolling stock, that one point two million dollars of reserves is gone in the next two years, and we need to think about seriously building those things back up, because our rolling stock is aging. Hopefully, we'll get more life out of it with a new building and warm storage, but I think it's another thing we need to consider. And definitely in the new council, new council moving forward after this year's election, has to make sure that we build reserves, because, you know, we have a lot of gross company now, we have a mine that just, you know, Derek just announced that we're looking at ten more years of operation. We have, you know, new opportunity coming in with, you know, generation. This is the time, if, you know, if these things fold, when we start building our reserves, so that it's not affecting, you know, twenty years from now, when the industry might be shrinking. So anyways, that's just my little blurb on it. So I, I'm looking forward to, you know, how we finance this thing, and I'm more than happy to take it out of that capital reserve, which is what it was designed for.
So thank you for that, and we are in pretty good shape right now financially with reserves, with a very small debt. So we're, we're in good shape compared to a lot of our counterparts, but utilizing those dollars property is key. My only question is in regards to the speed plow, we had a speed plow in the past, we, we didn't replace it because employees felt that it wasn't utilized piece of equipment. So I guess my concern is that, is this something that you're going to, through your works supervisor, to enforce or encourage the use of that vehicle rather than the grader?
Absolutely, and that's why we're looking at that. I did look at some other municipalities, and they also went from grader back to speed plow. So I did do, you know, quite a bit of research on it. We're also looking at, you know, when we look at our morning call-ups. Right now, we have to send a driver on a, you know, on the grader, another driver on a sander. This on a weekend call-up or morning call-up is one off.
One year. Oh, yeah, it makes sense. I mean, no different than when you look at the garbage truck, and we look at whether we go into the container system, where there's only one driver with a dual steering wheel program, and one driver lifts the garbage can for everybody, so we subsidize garbage cans. That's a good utilization of employees and dollars. Just a little.
For next year.
It's probably got yellow paint in it, too. All good?
All good.
Okay, so we're gonna buy five hundred thousand dollar worth of snow removal equipment, and we hope we never have as much snow as we had this year in the future to come, but we're gonna be prepared.
That's a million dollars.
No, five hundred thousand, four hundred ninety-three thousand, I believe it was.
Yeah, just the one piece of equipment.
Well, it's a combination of the.
Yeah.
Speed plows.
Instead of the grader. So we'll, we still keep the grader in stock, yeah.
We're just gonna utilize it less, so it'll last longer.
That too.
Four years.
Two grader.
We're gonna try to keep it as long as we can. We're looking at like really increasing the life cycle of all our equipment.
But Mrs. Kurchinski made it very clear, our garbage truck is at its life end, and, you know, that thing could go any time. It's been passed and passed and passed and passed and passed. All in favor?
Yes.
Karen, thank you very much. Thank you for that report.
There's no more money, huh?
The cemetery.
Yeah, next we have a motion here that the following check runs be approved for payment for the amount, council's payable for the amount six hundred ninety thousand, three hundred sixty-two hour length four cents. At payroll, the amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand, nineteen dollars and sixty cents. Move by.
Counsel Reynolds.
Thank you. Counsel Tabushi, any questions of those check runs? And for Councils to get information, anytime you'd like to look at the accounts payable check runs, you can go in and visit the treasurer. He'll be glad to share those numbers and sheets with you.
Next Friday.
Anytime.
This Friday.
All in favor?
Yes.
Karen, thank you. Okay, report the appointed boards and members and committees. I had some, some meetings over the last week, last week. I had Noma Board in conjunction with AMO Committee of the whole, the Northern Caucus. Noma discussed their strategic plan, which we presented at the AGM in April in Port Francis, Ontario, as well as we entered, we had a session with the Northern Policy Institution, the Northern Policy Institutions, looking at taking over the immigration portal. The Thunder Bay group that was running it for the last ten years, kind of with Beck and her team, have rescinded their, their operations because of no more funding. Of course, the Policy Institution wasn't taking it up, but looking for a funder. So it's a wonderful tool, but nobody seems to want to fund it right now. So they're gonna look at, they're gonna bring a report back to our next board meeting at Noma, with some opportunities to look at funding and how do we continue to operate the immigration portal for at least three years. That'll be an update in regards to that. AMO Committee of the whole discussed Northern, Northern Caucasus, and Northern Caucasus talked about the the upcoming AMO conferences, and whether it's still gonna be an in-person or a virtual. As of now, it's considered to be an in-person in Ottawa in August. We'll have that till the end of July, we'll call that, they're set to go with the, with the actual virtual one, if need be, with the increase of COVID cases if there is. But there was a lot of discussion around the dual conference, like an in-person, virtual conference is very hard to do. But FCM, Canadian Federation of Municipalities, is gonna try one this year in Regina. And so we'll see how that goes, and we're gonna monitor that and see how that's for twenty-three. Because there are people who feel comfortable, regardless of COVID or not, just sitting back and, and watching it virtually. But they did show the numbers were down in both years of virtual conferences, five hundred and sixty last year, and twenty-one and six hundred and something in twenty twenty. So the numbers definitely give greatly impact when it's a virtual, because, you know, Mr. Kurchinski and myself tuned in, and, you know, to sit in front of a computer screen, as we have been for the last two years, is a long day. Where you get up in a, in a presentation sessions, and you're meeting with ministers, you're interacting with other people, it's a lot more different of a process, so that'll be all coming forward. Talked a bit about firefighter certification program, there's a lot of confusion around that, I, I hope I rose up to speed on all that. There's nothing more required, all our, all our members have been trained. What they're saying now is that, because they've been trained, we just wanna certify. So they're gonna come in and say, okay, Joe, you've been certified on ladder heights, you're good. Here's your little piece there, ready test, you're good, you're certified. This whole new program that gets me re, you know, instituted with firefighter training. So there's a lot, a lot of confusion around it, so we hopefully got that squared away, but there'll be more to come. And fire marshal assured everywhere that he would be with each and every fire department anywhere in Ontario, make sure they're up to speed. There's no new training needed, it's just certification of those training aspects.
And record keeping.
Well, it's, record keeping is already being done, it's just our firefighters are not certified, right? They've done all the training, they've gone off the Thunder Bay, they've done burn units and all the, all the things they need to do, rescue, whatever, it's just certification hasn't been there, to be recognized as uniformity certification across the province, so. It's just good for everybody's protection in regards to insurance as well. Then, of course, the AMO board meeting the following day, which is the long one, which is, we talked about the, the impacts of the caribou. Amazing. I have to laugh because it's very frustrating, it's been ongoing for so long, and just they don't get it. And people from London, Ontario, and Peterborough are talking about the caribou, and then the coastal caribou, the Lake Spirit coastal caribou compared to the northern caribou and the migration routes and the connecting links. And the, they don't even, they didn't even realize all the caribou removed from Isipacan Island, and they're on slade islands, and there's, and if you watch any of the generation presentations, a lot of the caribou, there's very little impact from mainland to the slade islands. So that's been an ongoing thing, the AMO board is discussing that. They, they wanna make sure that they've been working with the government, obviously, as you heard some of the announcements, some of the discussion we had at our board meeting was the province signing off on the ten-dollar daycare programs. Still, yeah, AMO's been very, working very closely with the government in regards to that behind the scenes. We all know that's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna be probably a four or five-year process where they can get down from sixty-seven dollars to ten dollars, if it ever gets to ten. But board has announced, as you heard today, maybe that he's talking about opportunities not only to reduce the fee, but having more people trained, more, more, more spaces available. So you might still have to pay thirty bucks, but you can at least get your child into daycare system somewhere. They had the treasury report, we talked quite extensively about AMO's position, we were sitting pretty good, we got about eight million dollars in the bank, and with a two-point-four million dollar surplus last year, so they're in really good shape. We talked about how we would like to spend that money, but there weren't any further. We could have borrowed some, I guess.
And Mr. Ferris then.
So it's in good shape, AMO is an organization, and they're looking at having a few more people brought on, on board for the, the organization to help assist in the relationship with the government. And you know what AMO really does mostly is, is policy. Policy and more policy, and then connection of policy and governance is really good. Executive Director's update, talked about all the sessions he would be attending, he will be attending the FCM. And we, we should be considering as well, having some sort of representation.
Just, I know, and I'm, I'm just trying to go back in time here. You had suggested we join FCM at one point because there was a grant available for building. Is that something we would wanna look at for?
That's what I'm saying, with the federal aspect, you know, there's more opportunities, maybe just go meet those connections. Since we're in Regina this year, it's a little late, we might be able to get on more, but it's kind of late for planning. But it's something we should consider through administration and new council, I mean, I have attendance at that, because we're talking, you know, federal level of governance and the different ministers, different opportunities. And we did receive, and there are all kinds of opportunities through the Federation of Municipalities funding model, so. Something if you get more tuned in to that. We had updated on the board survey, we all completed survey on how we felt that the organization was running, it was very successful. But there was, of course, people complaining about the length of time it takes for different sessions. Especially the Northern Caucus, they seem to talk a lot. Sorry, but I, I thought, there's forty-three of us on the board, and some thirty-five of them never say a word. So I'm wondering what, what it is there for, right? What, what organizations are represented, what riding and counties and all that. So I made a comment about, a, a, a strong organization has a strong chair. And chairs' responsibility is to cut people off. So if they're talking too long, sorry, I'm the chair today, but I'm not trying to talk too long, just trying to give you a quick overview. As Kelly would say, my reports are quite lengthy, but I try to wrap them up quickly. So that was, that was a good discussion. Blue box support progress on that. And I'm sure Mr. Ferris will be rough speed on that, hopefully in a year or two, we won't be paying anymore for recycling in our community. That's the plan. The manufacturers, through the responsibility of manufacturing, will take care of that. We will take that two hundred thousand dollar fee and put it into equipment or something else in regards to our community. So that's good, LES in regards to what part of LES, is there's an update on that? And many other things around the policy part of AMO, which you know, we may talk about, I'm sure. And then we had our Thunder Bay District Municipal League on Saturday, which was the Thunder Bay District Municipal League, the AGM. We had elections, we, I was re-elected for president for one more year because of the change around COVID and all that, and we wanna be in, in tune with Noma. So Noma's AGM is already gonna take place in April, so it'll bring us the lead to next April. Whether I'm here or whoever was appointed, Rodney Swarke from Way River, and Wendy Wright from Omni was also appointed vice and second vice to replace this term, one-year term. We're gonna go through, but we decided to keep it in tune with Noma. Then we talked about our budget, our budget's not bad, we have about thirty-seven thousand dollars in the bank. Didn't make any money this year, hopefully we'll have a little bit of revenue coming from the fall conference. Talked about fall conference lineup, which was supposed to take place at the end of this month, which didn't happen because of COVID. Nobody wanted to get involved in the in-person meetings. And then, of course, we talked about, about our executive director is retiring. So she, we need to replace her, she'll stay on for the next little bit, we've got a board meeting in May. And then, of course, working up into her summer meeting and then our fall conference in September. She will stay on to help assist that person, but I'm putting the word out now for our staff or any staff out there, she's gonna set an amendment to all clerks. It's a six thousand dollar honorarium annually, and there's a bit of work involved weekly, but it's not a lot, like an hour or two maybe, but it's more around the conference. And it's a five hundred dollar a month honorarium, and the travel expenses to and from board meetings if need be. If you're primarily had to go to a meeting in Thunder Bay for the annual AGM or conference, that would be offset, as you will tell us. So it's a, it's a little perk for somebody who's administratively, and doesn't have to be specific anybody in the municipality's office, if anybody in the municipality's interested in governance of an organization. So that's, we're gonna be advertising that. Other than that, that was pretty well addressed. Any questions? All good? Good, thank you. Was that fast enough, Mr. Suki? Bylaws. We have a bylaw, a bylaw number, bylaw number twenty twenty-one, being a bylaw to authorize the sale of property specifically fourteen peninsula road, part of pin number sixty-two forty-eight eight dash two zero five two, part number LT twenty-one concession, I pick as LT twenty-four one nine two five, expecting parts one and two RP fourteen eighteen, fourteen eight, eight, eighty-one, eight, and part number, pin number sixty-two forty, four hundred forty-eight dash zero zero forty. A lot of parcels and pieces, and sections of the, the act, and fifty-five R sixty-six oh three, except part one, fifty-five R seventy-seven fifty-nine, Marathon District of Thunder Bay. Within the district of Thunder Bay, the final description of the lands will be detailed in the land parcel survey. Once it is registered with the Land Registry Office, you read it first, second, and third time, body passes twenty-eighth day of March twenty-two. So that's parts one and two, fourteen peninsula road. Move by.
Counsel Reynolds.
Secondly, Counsel Lake, any questions? Great, thank you very much. All in favor?
Yes.
There it is, thank you. Uh we have a motion here that counsel hereby uh supports resolution of Mississippi Mills pertaining to abandoned cemeteries. For the copy, this motion should be forwarded out to the individual listed in originally resolution of Mississippi Mills and their information and action. Move by.
Counselor Rounce.
Counselor Rounce, secondly, Counselor Bushi, questions? Counselor Bushi.
We have an old, I guess, graveyard in town. What is the town's responsibility for that? Or is it, we don't look, don't tell?
Put those stones up.
Yeah, so so there's, the the question and the motion are are two different things.
Sure.
So the the question is a valid one, uh but that's not, uh I want I want to state this the right way first, so it's respectful. So. Um you, there there are individuals that are buried in that area. Prior to Marathon becoming a municipality of any type.
Yeah.
So therefore, it's not, you know, our cemetery to maintain. Um what they're saying here is when you have a a going concern cemetery. I E, let's say it was a private one, um and that city bankrupt. Right now, the municipality has to take that responsibility. Right? So with without any say, what what the act says is that thou shall take it on. Right? Well, you know, that's, you know, that puts municipality in a position where, you know, when you think of cities, these could be massive cemeteries. Right? That have, you know, major costs, right? So it can't be as simple as the municipality just has to take it on. There has to be some process. Right? A due process, how that happens.
Does anybody know where Mississippi Mills is?
Ottawa.
By Ottawa.
Yeah.
South side of Ottawa. Uh yeah, there's a lot of old country, little towns and private, it's, yeah, it's farming area. And so there's a lot of little cemeteries. You know, like similar to what you're saying.
Yeah, but but, oh, sorry.
They're they're private and they're owned by the the little village of that was now abandoned and now it falls within the municipality or the county. And the Mississippi Mills is a part of a county, a landarch.
Yeah.
So the landarch county then is responsible. So then, you know, it goes to that, right? So it it's a great resolution. It won't never happen in our part of the woods typically, but it's a it's a good one to support.
Okay, but but one of the concerns that I had when I was kind of looking at over this thing is it's not just private and it's like, well, somebody did a bad. Job of running it because there's supposed to be perpetual care, et cetera, et cetera. The problem is also. From my understanding, they lumped in what used to be a small church cemetery that's. Yeah, was was abandoned. So is is that my understanding that those those would still be concerned? And they became part of the the municipality. Now, those churches have been banned for a long time, so the municipality probably absorbed those years ago. But is is that still a concern or is or is it the commercial, I'll say, issues that they're worried about, the commercial?
Well, it's private, any private. So whether it's private individual or private firm or a private church, churches are are.
Yeah.
So they don't pay taxes to the municipality, and because of that, there's no cost of recovery.
Yeah.
They close up and they move away. What do you do? Try to sell the church and for tax registrations and even that, how do you do that? That's that's an unusual thing. We we ever had to do that? For a church.
A church? Yeah, we have done a tax sale for a church.
That district.
Yes, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, so it it can be done, but in the case of the cemeteries, again, it goes back to having the ability to do do diligence.
Yeah.
Right? That's not to say that a municipality would never take the cemetery on, but you have to do the proper research, proper diligence, and you know, what what are you getting yourself into?
So from the, from that perspective, administration obviously supports this resolution moving forward. Okay.
Yeah, all good?
Yeah.
No other questions? Thank you very much. All in favor?
Yes, yes. I really support the next.
This resolution we got here is counsel hereby supports the resolution received from Mississippi Mills regarding the joint several liability reform and further the copy of the motion before our individual listed in the oncoming resolution, Mississippi Mills. Their information and action. Move by. Counselor Lake, secondly, Counselor Suki, questions? Counselor Bushi.
Yeah, obviously. This has been a thorn in the side for municipalities forever, and it's basically, we're getting more and more towards the American. Hand grenade litigation and whoever has the deepest pockets pays. And traditionally, it's always been municipalities in this case who pay. Like when we had those seminars on good roads. They were found to be five percent liable because the lines were the the great, the shoulder grade wasn't done right to the edge of the ditch. And because the other people who were involved had no insurance or very little, the town or the municipality basically had to pay the full full one million dollar. Award because they had the ability to pay that listing. So I think from this, from this perspective and. AMO and Noma and everyone else has been trying to get this through for years, but it it's come to no, no fruition, I guess. And I don't know if by end of this government's term, which is this year, if it's gonna get done, but I think this has to be addressed because. It it, we're just getting into this area of, oh, I tripped in fault or fell or or mostly it's traffic. I got into an accident. I sue the other person. The other person has limited insurance, so the town is found five percent liable, so they have to pay it. So I think it's the one we have to support and I think is one we send to the new president. You know, of no, or Thunder Bay District and get this thing back on the burner because it's something with insurance costs, but they are, it has to be addressed. And it hasn't been addressed since, in basically our whole term, you know, terms.
Just for counsel's information, it 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 has been addressed, has been addressed by AMO uh through through uh Noma, Phenom. To the government, they're working on it and they're addressing the joint and several liability portion, which is, as you stated, it's about bigger, deeper pockets where people go after for suits. But it's it's a, it's a process because it's such a big file. So we're waiting for response from from AMO in regards to where they are with that. So it is not falling off the off the end of the table. It's still there, but it just, it's a, it's part of the file. And I think. There's a lot of stuff with COVID that really impacted a lot of the files, so we'll see. I'll bring it up for attention in Noma again. You can bring, well, Counselor Rounce, you're coming to Noma. Maybe you have a question asked of the minister there and we'll get you up on stage and say. Yeah, what about our joint several liability? I don't think that minister.
Can't wait, can't wait.
All in favor of supporting this motion?
Yes.
Okay, so prior to adjourned this meeting, uh we will be going to the in camera meeting to discuss a position, a plan, procedure, criteria, instructions applied. For the municipality negotiations carried on on behalf of the municipality and local board. But before that, I'd like to just announce that the council will be doing its code of conduct training right following that in camera meeting. This came out of a a this uh decision by the the ethics commissioner to have our council do a code of conduct training. It was put off. Because of COVID and different uh time availability, so we are gonna be doing the code of conduct training.
And our new council.
And with also in the council, we'll work well with Mr. Mr. Suki. Uh get him up to speed on the code of conduct as counselors uh go forward and for the upcoming elections, a good tool to have for uh understanding. Your role in the municipality. So we look forward to that uh right after our closed meeting. So thank you very much. And I do have a motion here to adjourn at the hour of five twenty P M. Thank you. Counselor Rounce and Counselor Lake, thank you very much.
Evening.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Mr. Paris, for those big type of like industrial builds that they do, is there like a Tarion warranty?